One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of quick comments here, no proclamations tonight. Just want to mention alternate side parking will end on March 15th. Yay. Alternate side parking. And don't forget to set your clocks back this weekend.
Oh, my gosh, though, thank you so much.
I think it is. Or ahead, yes, spring ahead. Anyway, that's it. See you, Mayor.
Spring ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like Monica to just give a real quick update on the transit bids.
So, on Wednesday, we did receive bids for the operation of our transit system. We are in the process of evaluating those responses, and our committee will be meeting this week to finalize that, and we will present a recommendation to council at the next meeting. Solid bids, and I'm pretty confident that there will be no delay in, or no lapse in service for our transit system.
Good news.
And then I was given a press release from Winona Arts, Saturday, April 11th, at the Masonic. There's going to be a double bill music series, Corey Median and Brothers and Eric Koskinen, which Lee assures me will be the show of shows for the community, so hopefully we can pack the space. That's all I have, thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Thurly.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
We have no public hearings. Onto the petitions, requests, and communications. Item 3.1 is a request for temporary on sale wine and malt liquor license for St. Mary's University for their homecoming June 27th. Move approval? I'll second. Got three of us.
Is that Paul?
Yes.
Okay, Paul made the motion, Michelle seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Carries.
Item 3.2 is a request from the Winona County Complete Count, and Brian Verding is here for a short presentation.
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. We'll hear from Brian before we vote.
Yeah, thank you, it's always good to hear what I have to say before you vote. So, I'm Brian, I'm engaged in Winona, and as you know, I wear up many hats, and one of them is as the coordinator of Winona County Complete Count Committee. So, every 10 years there's a census, it's really critically important for all kinds of things, like local government aid, social services programs, and especially this count for U.S. House representation. Minnesota's always been kind of on the verge of losing a House seat. So, all kinds of really great reasons to ensure everyone in the county is counted. The city's been a great partner in helping establish this Complete Count Committee along with Winona County, and our role is really just getting the word out, doing tons of outreach, letting folks know the census is here, helping answer questions, and really just doing lots and lots of promotion. So, the census starts this month, it's had it now, and so March 12th is when the first mailing goes out, and they'll be going out throughout March and April. Folks will be invited, they'll go to every residential address. Folks will be invited to complete the census in one of three ways. The new way is online this year, it's both like browser and mobile friendly, and so that gives folks a lot of options. And then they can also complete by phone, and they can complete by mail. And so, over the next two months, folks will be getting those all residential addresses. They'll be census workers in town, counting group quarters, and then starting in late April, early May, and they're going through the summer, there'll be members, census representatives in town, county folks who can respond. And just a couple of things to highlight, there are jobs available, so folks know, looking for flexible employment, they're paying $16.50 and up in an hour, and they're hiring now. Yeah, it's not that, got around to it too, but we're going to keep fighting for the higher wages here. And then the other thing is that I'm working on behalf of the Complete Count Committee with, we have more than 75 organizations at the table, hundreds of community partners, and we're doing direct resource and outreach with folks who serve traditionally hearted count populations, which are both traditionally undercounted and marginalized populations. And sometimes populations you might think of, like young children are often undercounted because folks don't think to count the two-year-old if they need more in the house. And so, Complete Count Committee will be really active over the next months, and my invitation to you, outside of approving this resolution and support, is just to help get the word out. The more folks we have actively spreading the word that the census is here, helping share resources, Complete Count has a Facebook page, a website, everything, all the communication you can do to your constituents to let folks know that the census this year would be really appreciated. And then I just also note, too, that the library is serving as what's called a question assistance center. So, if you have members of your, any constituents coming to you, or members of the public coming to you with questions, you can send them straight to the public library to answer those. So, I really appreciate the partnership and the support, and we're just going to continue to be really active in getting the word out the best we can.
All right, questions? Al?
Just a thank you for your group going ahead and spearheading this in the community. It's really important. I know Bob Baminick, our county recorder, last time, 10 years ago, did a yeoman's job in doing this, and appreciate another group stepping forward to do it this time. My question is, though, in, you know, over the years, I've been always asked this, how does the census count students attending our universities?
Yeah, how does the census count universities? That's a great question. Where, so the census counts folks where they are on April 1st, and so with the vast majority of university students, they're counted here. So, if they're home somewhere else, in Minnesota, in another state, even international students of college age that are abroad, here, they're all counted here. So, that's what census goes by as a metric, is where do you count a book first. And so, Winona State, St. Mary's, Minnesota State Southeast are all really big partners of this group, which is fantastic, and are doing a lot of outreach. And then the landlord association, housing association, has been really helpful, too, in helping get the word out to a lot of grandparents. So, that's a big population, especially those who have more supplies than rentals, helping get the word out that folks are counted here.
Okay, great.
George?
Just a question, Brian, if you would know, when it's all completed, how accurate is this? What's the plus or minus margin of error?
That's an excellent question.
Okay, good.
I do know that in terms of the overall count, and maybe this is just a nice bit of friendly competition for us, so Minnesota's consistently among the top, but I think was number two during the last round, second only to Wisconsin. And so, the more overall numbers we're able to count, the more accurate it is. So, Minnesota's always been much more accurate.
But I think 20 years ago, we beat Wisconsin, and they were second. We flip and flop.
Time for a comeback.
That's right.
Pam, I think you have a question.
Yes, well, I just have a question. This is pretty, I'm obviously off point a bit, but does the census record people's names anymore? I do some genealogy research, and I am always glad to find my forbears in census reports.
Yeah, census still does record names. There's nine questions this year. Census data is also private confidential for, I think, almost 70 years, so genealogists will have a little bit of time to wait to find out if they're going to be census. It's varied over the years. I think the census data used to be, and it used to be, you know, get a cup of coffee and devote three hours of your life to kind of completing this thing, it's not that case anymore, you know, which is a double-edged sword, it makes it a lot more accessible, but not quite as the data for that historical research.
So, there isn't a long form and a short form, they're all the same?
Yeah, nine questions.
Okay.
Moment of your life, just a moment.
Any other questions for Brian?
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian, thank you.
And any other comments or questions before we vote?
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.3 is a sign for the Relay for Life. Motion to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.4 is a request for the St. Martin Strawberry Festival in Sinclair Park on June 14th. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.5, reappointments to the Board of Adjustment of John Krafchuk and Chris Sanchez. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any questions?
No. Were there any other applications?
No.
No.
Mayor?
Go.
Just have a comment that I appreciate the service for all people who serve on our volunteer boards and commissions, and especially the Board of Adjustment, which is pretty intense at times.
And I know that both of these individuals are active members of the board.
Yep.
Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.6 is a request to close Main Street parking lot for a wedding on Saturday, May 30th. Motion to rec staff to close the parking lot.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Paul?
Yeah, is there some details, is this so that the mall can be used, or, and have we done this before?
Mayor, council, we have done this before. This is the plaza area, currently we still call it Main Street Parking Lot, but I think in more, as Levy Park continues to be used, it's the plaza area, but we do need to, we still do come to council to request that section of, I guess, Main Street, the plaza to be closed.
No, I understand.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.7 is a request by the Minnesota Bass Nation to hold a tournament at Lyons Park on May 17th. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Comments? George?
Just want to say, events like this, like the one last year, it brings people from all over the country, and they bring a lot of dollars into town and catch a lot of fish, too.
And hopefully they come back. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.8 is the farmer's market license agreement.
Move to approve the agreement?
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.9 is the climbing boulder donation.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Al?
You know, what is the city's liability for something like this? And where, you know, how is that recognized with, you know, with the climbing? I mean, I'll support the motion, but again, I'm concerned about, you know, the issue of liability and how it affects our community.
Mayor and council, when this type of equipment is installed, it, the best analogy I can use, it's categorized as playground equipment. So, we would follow our national safety standards for playground equipment, so things like fall height, walk-up curb heights, things to make sure that this is safe. And so, typically, it's like a piece of playground equipment. And then, to go one step further, often cases with these types of materials, then, much like our playground equipment, it's really under that category of recreational immunity in Minnesota.
Anything else? George?
Yeah, I certainly appreciate this donation, and is there a number to it?
Mayor and council, the REC Alliance, to my understanding, received a donation of $65,000, and this boulder and some ancillary pieces of equipment associated with it will be roughly that amount. So, we're looking at approximately a $65,000 donation.
Appreciate it very much.
Pam?
So, I've had a question from a constituent of how, who decides where it's going to go and how it's going to be fit in with the park?
So, Mayor and council, it's a really good question. We've been very clear with the REC Alliance and with this donation that we will look at Levy Park as an option, that was their request as part of that redesign for Phase Two, which we just recently approved. This is one of those high priority items to be looked at first, and whether or not it fits in that area and logistically fits, we think there's a good spot for it. Ultimately, we would come back to council with a recommendation for placement. If for any logistic reason it doesn't fit in Levy Park, then our logical location would be to move outward from Levy Park. Be anywhere within the park system then at that point.
So, it's bigger than I thought it would be, but it's also more handsome looking than I thought. I thought it'd be a big blob of plastic. So, is it really rock?
Pardon me?
Is it really rock? Is it really made out of rock?
No, it's still fabricated.
Okay, thanks.
And then, Mayor and council, I would just add that we have gotten feedback about more of the play features, I think the mayor alluded to that when we brought up Levy Park, and we'll look at not just only this climbing boulder, it certainly is a play feature, but could there be something in and around it that would also enhance, we would call it the play aspect of Levy Park?
Eileen?
Still, the first thing I want to say is to thank the REC Alliance, because I know that they've been really passionate about that, and I appreciate that they have made this donation, and I also know that these user groups are some of the reason that our trail and park systems stay in good shape, because they really care about the space. But the question I have is, what is the lifespan on a piece of equipment like this? I know we're in the process of decommissioning some of our playground equipment, and the loss of, you know, neighborhood playgrounds is being felt around the community, so what is, what are we looking at for how long this will last?
Mayor and council, I don't have a good answer for that. I can certainly look into that, and we bring it back, I can make sure that we have it. I know that typical industry standards are right around that 20-year mark, although I'm not as familiar with this type of structure, so I'll make sure that we bring that back or recommunicate that to council.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.10 is to renew the liquor permit for the Winona Tour vote. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Under new business, item 5.1 is the heritage preservation commission grant applications. Make a motion to authorize staff to apply for the grants.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Comments? Personally, I'm glad to see the designation of both of these, the Wyndham Park, from a locally designated district to a national register, and for the Bandshell with its upcoming centennial celebration, it's certainly worthy, I'm sure. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.2 is the FAA entitlement funds transfer.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of funds to the City of Alexandria.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Comments? Questions? George?
Keith, you just want to touch on this, what we're all doing here.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Every year, all the general aviation airports get certain entitlement money from the federal government for development of the properties, and it's always in a sum of $150,000. We get that every year, and don't actually get it, it's in our account with the federal government. Sometimes the projects don't line up in time to use it, so cities will exchange it. We borrowed from Alexandria with the idea that we would give it back at some point. For the snow removal equipment building, we borrowed $150,000 from that fund, now we're putting it back into that fund. It doesn't really come out of our actual cash, it comes out of this designated funds from the federal government.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.3 is a call for public hearing for the host's approval of the issuance of revenue bonds for Gunderson Health. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion?
And this is to set the public hearing on March 16th, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.4 is a community arts and culture strategic plan.
Make a motion to authorize staff to execute the agreement to transfer the funds?
Second.
Motion by Paul, and seconded by Eileen. Eileen, do you want to say a few words about this?
Mayor and council, I just wanted to say that we received submissions from three nationally-recognized firms. This was by far the more favorable to the panel that looked at these, and it is one of the most renowned firms in the country, so we're very excited to have this study out.
Eileen, and then Al.
Where did this proposal line up cost-wise compared to the other ones that were submitted?
It was actually the lowest cost, which we never imagined.
And then Al.
You know, this, I looked over their details, and we seem to be one of the smaller communities that they've worked on, I guess, given the cost issue that we've received and all of that, we should be happy that this is moving forward, I guess.
Yes, I agree. And again, it was significantly less than the other two proposals that we did, and by probably the finest term.
Eileen?
So, what, how does this compare to what we had anticipated this process would cost?
The anticipation was a sort of backup and acting figure that we threw at hoping. We, you know, the research for what each community receives is what the community is asking, so there really was no way to accurately gauge exactly what Winona was asking. So, we threw up, we put a figure down saying, we think it should be in this range, but as soon as we started to talk to firms that were in this field, we realized we had significantly come in lower with what we thought it was going to be.
Which was what?
$30,000. And that was my guess, and that's based upon people that I've talked to around the country that have done these plans. What I failed to ask the question correctly, because I, what I was talking, these guys, these people I talked with, they were only thinking I was asking about a specific portion of a plan, not an entitled, an entire strategic plan, like is what's being quoted here. In fact, we went back to them a couple of times, but I sat on one call, and they actually reduced the price even further. So, we were really pleased with the way that they're willing to work with us, and we're also planning to use Engage Winona, which will also save us some money, as Brian will help to pull folks together from throughout the community to be part of the input sessions.
And this is going to be part of the comprehensive plan going forward as well.
Absolutely. Again, the downtown strategic plan, the trail and parks plan, this plan, and a sustainability plan, those will all be part of the overall comprehensive plan. And the intention is to bring the comprehensive plan down in cost, knock on wood, but even if it doesn't, these are standalone plans that will be referenced in the comprehensive plan. So, if we ever have to go in and change one of these plans, we don't have to change the entire document of the comprehensive plan, which is a significant project.
Paul?
Do we have any idea on how large the task force or advisory committee will be for developing the plan?
We proposed between six and eight folks, and we reached out and put invitations out, but we're going to wait for the Fine Arts Commission to weigh in on the last few folks that will be invited to be on the task force.
Say again, how many?
Six to eight.
Six to eight, thank you.
And that's only the task force, of course, and then we'll reach out to the community and have much more public input.
Anything else? I think we're ready to vote, then, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.5 is the portable radios for the Winona Police Department. Make a motion to approve the request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Chief, you want to come up here and maybe tell us a little bit, or there, what I mean, tell us a little bit about what's behind all this?
We get our radios off the state bid, the ones that we have currently were purchased when the entire radio system across the state migrated from a VHF system to a digital system roughly 10 years ago. The company Motorola that makes the model radio that we have now discontinued that model, and they will no longer service them. We've been able to get a couple of minor fixes, like if a knob or an antenna breaks, but they will no longer be stocking those for that particular radio either. So, we had planned on replacing them this year through the budget process over, we looked at three years, and I got back the estimates last week from the vendor, and looking at the financing fees, we'd save quite a considerable amount, roughly about $16,000 in finance fees if we purchased them upfront rather than financing. And right now, until the 15th, or, yeah, I believe the 15th of March, which I'd like to because of the alternate side ending as well, they have a $350 discount per radio, which would add another $14,000 in savings, so it just made sense to look at doing it all right now, I guess, is what the request for the money was from that fund.
Michelle?
So, do we have a sense that in 10 years, they're also going to say these radios are no longer repairable?
I'm not the tech guy, I get the impression because of the technology, basically they're, they went from an old VHF radio, which I'm not an expert at, to a digital radio, which is basically a computer with all the software options that are added in there. We're not the only department, obviously, going through this, the county is purchasing the same ones that we are with the same options or, you know, criteria for the radio as well.
So, then I assume that moving forward, you'll have in place a plan to start replacing these at a regular interval, because I'm guessing less than 10 years, the technology's going to change. I mean, it seems like every year.
It looks like we're going to have to do that. It's much different than the old-fashioned VHF that tended to last longer.
I miss them sometimes.
Yeah.
The old stuff that lasted forever. Well, thank you.
Al?
Is Motorola the only vendor?
They are the one that, they have the state bid, so the savings is pretty considerable. They make probably the most robust radio available, so from my understanding is there are others available, but they're not built as rugged, and we tend to go through them a little faster than other users.
Okay, thank you.
George?
With the radios now, or I know with these radios, you're able to speak with any police department in the state?
Basically, yeah, any police department, sheriff's department, or agency fire department that's on the 800 megahertz system, we can communicate with.
Thank you.
Anything else for the chief?
Just a little bit, where does the number 40 come from?
We have 39 officers on the street, so that's the number that we're looking at replacing is 39, and one extra typically ends up at our front desk, and then we have that extra go out. Our animal control, parking control right now, their use is a little bit, well, gentler and kinder, and they will get more years out of their radios, and we'll keep the old ones as backups.
I hope you get a new one, too.
I don't have one right now, I had to give it to a 3 to 11 shifter who's broke a month ago, so that one hit its demise.
All right, well, thank you. I think we're ready to vote.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.6 is the Pool 6 dredge material management plan.
Mayor, maybe I could lead off of this.
Sure, go ahead.
I know I did an agenda item, and I would recommend that we don't even, you know, we don't follow what I had put down here, because things have changed quite dramatically even since last week. First off, I'd like to thank our friends from the Corps for being here this evening to give, you know, an update to the council so that you understand the situation that they're under, and to start this engagement process between the city and the Corps, excuse me. It was process between the city and the, and the Corps, excuse me. Um, it was mentioned about having an executive committee meet, uh, with the Corps and with the Council. And I, I believe that would be a really good course of action for the city to undertake. Um, so I would ask that the Council would appoint the Mayor, maybe one other member, and then staff would then, uh, meet with their executive team and we could, we have time to come back now because the Corps did grant a 30-day extension before, uh, for the, um, uh, public comment period would be over. And that gives us an opportunity to come back to the full Council at the end of the month, um, or even at the first meeting in April and offer some suggestions about how we may want to comment, if at all. We may have already resolved some issues by then and would have a good course of action for us to pursue at that time as well.
I think it's a good plan, and I guess I'd be interested in knowing, um, who on the Council might want to serve.
I would, but I actually have a question. Um, is the purpose of this, uh, group to address the concerns of the Council and the public to bring back a possible solution for a vote at a future meeting in April? Is that the direct purpose of the group?
I'm not sure that it would actually require that to come back. I think it's more to look a little bit more in-depth into some of the options that the Corps has been exploring. Maybe a few more that we would have, uh, to offer and to arrive, see if we can arrive at a solution that we think would be mutually beneficial, bring that back to the Council. And if that's an agreement, um, then, then let the Corps know and they can proceed with their planning process.
Well, I'll make the motion to appoint an executive committee. Is that what you want to call it? To deal with the Corps on upcoming issues related to the dredge plan so they can come back in April after the close of the public comment section for further vote from Council? Is that what you're looking for?
It'd be prior to the closure.
Prior to the close. I meant that.
I would second that.
Good. A second, a motion by Michelle and seconded by Eileen. And I'll just ask the Council members, if you have an interest, send me an email, let me know. We'll, um, if nobody responds, I'll call somebody else. We'll get at least another Council member on there.
May I ask a question, turn legal?
Yeah, sure.
So I'm just, I just would like to know what our legal obligation is with the Corps in regards to their request?
Mayor and Counsel, that's a broad question. Um, the, in terms of our obligation as, in terms of what their process is at this point, if the Council, um, is in disagreement with what is in the plan, um, some direction to staff about what that disagreement would be would be in order so that we have some idea of what kind of comments we would want to make to the Corps in terms of trying to steer how they develop their plan one way or the other, in terms of the alternatives that they're looking at. We don't have an obligation per se to do anything. Um, it really comes down to what does the Council want? Are, are we, are you okay with the plan? Are there aspects of the plan that you don't like? Are there aspects of the plan that you do like? Um, the, the idea of the plan is to try to communicate with them, you know, what about that plan you do or do not like now. Um, and so I, I think from staff's standpoint, you know, in terms of moving forward, um, you know, i- is there evaluation of certain components of the plan that need to be done? You know, those kinds of things. But it really comes down to, you know, whether or not you have concerns about what is in that plan right now. Um, the other obligation that we have is we are currently under an agreement with the Corps, uh, at the Harbor location, that one acre spot that whatever 15,000 to 20,000, I think, cubic yards of sand is deposited there a year. Um, obviously that's used from a beneficial use standpoint. There's an agreement with the Corps now that basically provides that the city in working with the Corps can set the footprint and the elevation at that site. But once the plant, once the sand is deposited, it really becomes the city's responsibility to do something with that sand. So if there's lots of sand at that site or the expansion of the site to two acres or eight acres or whatever it ends up being, under that type of a scenario, it is the city's responsibility then. And if you have too much sand, what do you do with the sand? Well, there's going to be a cost to move the sand. Whose cost is that? Is that your cost? Under the current agreement, it is, but we don't have an agreement on the other components of their plan. So those are things that would have to be worked out with the Corps as well in terms of what, what does that future agreement look like? In particular with the expansion of those sites. Uh, the current agreement runs through 2021, so we're obligated at this point pursuant to that agreement for that one acre site now. Beyond the expansion of that one acre, that's something that we do not have agreements for at this point. So that would be something that would have to be determined.
Thanks.
Okay. And just for people listening, uh, we did have a pre-Council, uh, conversation about this for an hour or so. We've talked at some length about this issue tonight. Anything else before we vote? George?
Uh, that committee that you'd be appointing, I feel a Port Authority member should serve on there as well.
Well, send me an email.
So, okay.
If you're interested.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 7.1 is Council Concerns.
Well, let's see. Let's start with, uh, Pam.
Well, all right. Um, I had a couple of people talk to me about the last meeting that they were watching from their, from home, and they were not able to either see us very well or hear us very well. So I know we have approved, at some point, we're going to reinstall new technology so that we can fix that. Uh, but I was unable to recall what, what the agreement was about that. When are we going to have new, new cameras, new lights, new action?
The clerk's been working on, um, on the equipment. Um, however, I would respectfully say let's get through the primary before I, we ask Monica to use her brain for any other reason. So, um, we'll have something back at the next Council meeting.
We do have several quotes and the plan would be to install it. They do need at least three months leave time. Okay? We haven't signed anything. I would, we would need to come back to Council to sign that agreement. So from then, plus three months. Okay. Then I guess my other Council concern is that in the meantime, let's all speak up.
Speak into the microphone.
They can't hear us.
All right, Paul?
Uh, well, I hope I'm speaking up loud enough. Um, so one thing, uh, so just, actually maybe two, um, uh, related to the Outdoor Rec Alliance. Pedal for the People does a pedal, a bike ride every month, and part of their proceeds goes to the Outdoor Rec Alliance. Uh, so the, some of the funds they raise goes into that fund. So I want to thank, uh, those people participating in Pedal for the People and contributing to the Outdoor Rec Alliance and vis a vis the, uh, the boulder that will go somewhere in the city. Um, and related to climbing, um, so I live over, over by Sugarloaf and, uh, it's been a great week for ice climbing because of the temperatures. It makes the ice really great to use your picks, um, and spikes. And on more than two occasions, I've counted more than 20 cars parked out there by the trailhead, just so that we all know how much use that trail is getting and, uh, and the demand for parking in that area. That's it.
Thank you. George?
Uh, just one question for the attorney. The agreement we have right now with the Corps expires at the end of 2021. So what you're doing now, they can continue to do more or less, correct? Okay. And then after 2021, it could be something different. Okay. And, uh, Tuesday night, last Tuesday, uh, at the National Guard Armory here in Winona, there was a very, very good large turnout to look at the Mankato Avenue re-engineering project of the roundabouts and different things. So it was good to see everyone out there and I know they, uh, the, uh, the Corps, uh, Mindot did, did get a lot, uh, a lot of good information back and, uh, they'll be coming back with more plans as well, too. And also, uh, I would like to see, just my gut feeling from what we're hearing, I know we're all hearing stuff, some negative, some positive. Uh, we maybe want to look at returning to this Broadway situation. That's all I'm going to say on it right now as things are taking place. And also, I would just like to offer condolences to the family of Tom Severson. Uh, Tom, a very well-active Winona businessman, uh, always jumped into any fundraising project you had, always was a service to the community, to many people. And outside of his family missing him, many, many City of Winona residents and throughout the area, uh, are going to miss this man. He was definitely good for the community and we lost a very, very good man. Thank you.
Okay. Michelle?
Just some unfortunate news. Um, with the coronavirus, the trip to Japan for our young ambassadors has been canceled. Um, they have had a high incidence of, uh, of infection in Japan, um, actually as far north as the Miyagi Prefecture where Misato is located. Um, Misato canceled as well. School there has been closed until early April at this point. And so although the fundraising efforts will probably continue and this group may likely end up being the group that goes either next April or maybe later in the year if all things balance out. Right now, our current ambassador group is looking at a canceled trip. Um, I'm sure a lot of disappointment on their side as that, that date in April was approaching very quickly. On a happier note, March the Pomeranians, um, I will talk about this until it happens, uh, at Sobieski Lodge, um, March 28th, Saturday, starting at noon, registration at 11:00. Come on down with your dressed-up pet. Let's have some fun. That's all.
Eileen?
Uh, I have a question. Um, since we were talking so much about sand today, I've been getting questions about the, um, playground at Dakota Street by the lake. I believe that one is set, the playground equipment is set to be decommissioned in the near future. And the questions I'm getting is, uh, is, is the space still going to be maintained as a play space even though there will be no equipment?
We could put sand there.
Uh, Mayor and Counsel, yes, Dakota Street Playground is coming out, or is scheduled to come out. We likely will not do that until the playground at the Banshell is complete. But it primarily is underwater and, um, needs, needs to be taken out. We likely would just fill that space and reseed it and just be open green space. There's no current plan to put any equipment back in that space.
Okay.
Al? Oh, I'm sorry.
One other thing. Um, so, uh, coming up, we, you know, we've been, uh, talking a lot about the Masonic, uh, the historic Masonic Building and investing in making that space usable. Um, you know, there's an event coming up, the Advocacy Center of Winona, which used to be the Women's Resource Center, is having its annual gala at the Masonic and it's going to be twenties-themed, just like every other event this year, but why not? Um, so, uh, that's a great event to support a service in our community that is very, very necessary, helping, um, uh, victims and survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. So keep an eye for that. Get your tickets.
Good. Al?
Um, just a reminder, primary election is tomorrow. First, uh, preference for the state of Minnesota is Super Tuesday, so we're a part of it. So, um, you know, our clerk has worked very hard to get everything going, so appreciate that. Um, and then, uh, we're into the month of March, which lends to April, which means flood season. And, uh, I'm sure our city departments are well geared for, uh, whatever we might see from the Mississippi. Let's hope that we don't get, uh, the snow that, uh, we got many, many years ago or the rains that added only to it. And then I concur with Counselman Borzakowski on sympathy to the Tom Severson family on his passing. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are seven items. Approval of the minutes from February 18th, the adoption of three ordinances, one to rezone land at 262 High Forest, another to rezon parcel of land at 276 East Garvin Heights, and an ordinance to amend a section of the liquor or, uh, liquor chapter, and three claims against the city, one by Dan Douglas, Shirlene Reinhardt, and Rodney Salts.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.